This is Wednesday, September 13, 2023. We have just finished an excellent work session on the Clark County Aging Readiness Plan Update, and now we are moving into council time. We begin with public comment for items that are on the agenda today only. Staff, do you see any citizens in the hearing room or online who wish to speak?
I do not care.
Thank you. So we move to old business. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of August 30?
I move approval of the minutes of August 30.
Second.
Second. Very good. Any changes, edits, discussion? Hearing none? Well, you know what? I got in trouble the last time on that for just saying, "Hearing none, let's consider it approved." I was told that we needed to have a vote. So let's have a vote. All those in favor of the minutes for August 30, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Thank you. The motion is passed unanimously. And moving to new business. 3.1 deals with Disability Awareness Month proclamation, an event for upcoming hearing in September or October. Staff, do you wish to address that?
For the record, this is Jordan Bogie, policy analyst. Yes, so this is a proclamation, my understanding is, has been given on an annual basis previously. And so the proclamation is for the council to signify their support of Disability Employment Awareness Month, and there will also be an associated event at Clark College on the 11th of October at 4:30 PM. And they have requested that a counselor join them to present awards at that session as well. So if there are any counselors who'd like to volunteer to join, to present as well, that has also been a request that's been forwarded to us.
I would volunteer to be available for that event.
Thank you. And then looking at what we need to do today. You have before us up on the monitor the information on Disability Awareness Month. With regard to the proclamation, do we need action? When do we need action on that?
So for today, this is, if you have any edits that you'd like or any changes you'd like to make, this would be the time to let me know about that, and I can make those edits. The proclamation, I believe, will be read on the 26th.
Okay. How about if we all pledge to take a good, strong look at this and get back in touch with you through Kathleen, right away, if we have any changes or edits? Would that work?
And I would add too, I think this is the same proclamation that we've done in the past, and if we do have any substantial edits, we'll have to bring that back to council before it's read at the 26th, so we can bring it back next Wednesday if council would like.
And Madam Chair, this was sent out previously by Jordan, and it did look exactly like previous, previously approved proclamation. So I have no edits or corrections. I'm good with it as it is. I'm going to send them.
Actually, there's three of us already who are okay with it as is. Kathleen, is that enough to go forward?
Yes, we'll put this on the 26th agenda for council to present during that meeting. Thank you.
Very good. And thank you for your presentation. Is there anything you'd like to add?
So we also have one other proclamation to review today, also planned to be read on the 26th. I sent this out previously as well. This is also a proclamation that has been made by the council before. It's very similar to last year's, and this is for Day of Remembrance for homicide victims in Clark County. So similar process, if folks feel good about it, if they've had a chance to review, sounds like we can look at it now, or if there are any other edits I can make before next Wednesday, and then it'll be read on the 26th, I believe is the plan.
I believe you said this was similar to last year's. I'm sorry, I missed any of the differences. Would you please point them out?
I think it is literally just the dates have been changed, so otherwise it is the same proclamation as last year.
Well, that's a good thing. Any other comments?
I'm supportive of this as is.
Yeah, same comment for me. I've read this in the past. I can't remember who read it last year, and it's identical, and I fully support the proclamation as is.
That makes three of us.
I fully support that as well.
Four of us. So Kathleen, can we go forward with this one as well?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, that's it from me on that.
Okay. Thanks again for your presentations. Counselor reports. Are there any? One of the things that I mentioned at yesterday's CTRAM meeting, I think, is worth noting again today, and that is this extensive report that was done by the University of Washington with regard to drugs that were found on the MACs. And note that this is on the MACs, and that was the totality of their study, not including CTRAM. But nevertheless, at the end of my remarks, I'll raise a question or two. One of the things that, well, that they opened with their findings is that fentanyl was found in almost half of the samples that were taken from the MACs trains, and methamphetamine in every single sample. That's very significant. However, in listening to the Public Health Director for the MACs and for CTRAM, speaking, I should say for the MACs, speaking on this, they made the point that there is no danger, no danger, to the public, given the quantity being so infinitesimal as to what was found on the MACs. Now, one of the things that I've been hearing from the community is, how is that known? What are the so-called infinitesimal levels? And as it relates to our own CTRAM, let's make sure that we have it studied and communicated so that the public feels and is aware of the true safety that is found, even though those drug levels are so prevalent. I won't say high, because they are not high, but they are certainly prevalent. And if you read the totality of the study from the University of Washington, it really is pretty interesting. But what it calls attention to for me is the need for us, not just as a society, but as a community, to pay attention to what is happening with our public transportation. What about the drug usage on that public transportation? It was concluded, not only about the methamphetamine at 100% that I mentioned, but the cocaine level was surprisingly high, almost 50%, not quite, but almost. And as these things were found, whether the item was measured by touch on the, say, the seats and the backs and so on, or in the air. So we know we have a drug problem in our community and in our culture. We just need to keep paying attention to it so that we know, and we can say with the same assurance, that the Public Safety Director did, that the public is not endangered by the quantity that is found. I encourage you to take a look at that study. It appears everywhere in the media right now, and if you haven't read it, do so, because it will give you some assurance that the amounts that are found are not of danger to you or me or the public right now, and we want to keep it that way. That's the end of my comments.
Madam Chair, I have a brief counselor report.
Yes, go ahead, please.
I think it's important to reiterate this, because not only do our city councilors and mayors and the general public really not fully understand the role that the county has in addressing our homeless situation throughout the county. So we had our echo meeting yesterday, and in community homelessness, that the county chairs, and where we're at is, we're about to update the community, the action plan on homelessness, which the county is responsible for producing. And, you know, we fund everything from shelter space on to behavioral health-supported housing. We do, the county has a huge role in addressing homelessness, and most of the public doesn't understand that. So we're in that planning process right now, and the cities are very interested in being engaged in participating, giving their input into that housing action plan for the homeless. So, you know, I gave a shout out yesterday to Vanessa Gaston, Michael Torres, for the absolutely detailed, complex, great work that our community services is doing on behalf of the county in this area. So I just wanted to restate that today. We are on a timeline to get this plan updated, and I think we're making good progress in having all of the stakeholders have an opportunity to fully weigh in this year on developing that plan through the council for the homeless primarily. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Are there other counselor reports?
Chair.
Hearing none? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, just a real quick one. We all heard the news about Casper, some recovery housing here locally that was going to be shut down, and I just wanted to take a moment to recognize an incredible citizen in our community, Chris Tabobin, and he is working, and it's not complete yet, but he's working very, very hard to create a path where those residents are not displaced, and they can continue to stay where they are at. It takes, you know, the work, the effort, the sacrifice of a lot of people to keep things running well in our county, and to have the support structure that we need to help people improve their lives. And sometimes people really do step up to that. Chris is one of those people, and I just wanted to give a shout out to him and all that he does in our community, and everyone else also that sacrifices their time, their efforts to make our community a better place.
Thank you, counselor. Are there other counselor reports? Hearing none? How about work session requests?
On today.
Thank you. Policy issues.
Chair, I just have a question related to work sessions. And I was wondering if we could get a tentative schedule of when things might be coming up, because sometimes a week's notice, I'd like a little more than that.
As soon as work sessions are scheduled, they're actually on your calendar, and they're on the weekly calendar. So if you, that's, because in these meetings, if I look at next week, I can see what work session the next week is already noticed on our.
The topic is there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Policy issues. Kathleen?
Yeah, so before I hand it over to Amber, and if Jordan has anything to say, I had two quick items. The first one, we do have Jennifer Baker on, if she can be moved over. Counselor Young had brought up a potential grant opportunity with regards to maybe part of our community planning process, and so Jennifer was the one that had information on that. And if I, per council's request, if we can just have her provide an overview, timing, and information on that grant, and then we will, if supported by the council, we'll have to discuss the match amount that the county would have to provide and see where that funding would come from. Jennifer, are you with us now? Can you hear us?
I am. Good morning, county councilors. It's a pleasure to get to join you over the internet today, and happy to share with you some updates on the Economic Development Administration grant for which the county can take under consideration. So EDA has a number of grant streams that are open right now. You know, it's a U.S. federal government agency, and the grant opportunity that I think is most pertinent for considerations by the county right now, it's called the EDA Planning and Local Technical Assistance Program. So there's a 25-page Notice of Funding opportunity, and the duration of that program runs 2021 to 2023. So time is really of the essence. There are a number of ways that an entity can be eligible to apply. The local economic development district, which would be the greater Portland region, could apply. A nonprofit organization could apply. A local public agency could also apply uniquely. But there's value in partnered applications, and so that's what I would love to chat with you about today. The amount is fairly nominal, so under the current funding stream, there would be an opportunity to apply for $50,000 worth of funding match, that would be matched for $100,000 worth of grant pool. And what those funds are eligible for are to help support organizations design and guide investments in planning and opportunity, economic opportunity. So it can be a little bit confusing navigating through the Notice of Funding opportunity, where you see the government match component can be greater, but it can be greater for counties that are witnessing higher levels of distress or higher unemployment levels, which is not where we are situated as Clark County. So what CRDC would propose is that there could be a joint application, or a CRDC application with county-assisted funding match, to undergo a feasibility study that looks at Clark County geography at large, and suggests a couple of sites, maybe a top three to five sites that could be aggregated and protected for industrial use and industrial employment and production opportunity into the future. I know county council has heard a lot of testimony and a lot of staff reporting to date on the vacant buildable lands model, and in my view, this is such an important opportunity for county council to think in an innovative way for how we can create the physical space for companies to grow into the future. And what we're hearing on the ground, and have been for the last five years, is that the industrial land inventory is very, very limited. Access to utilities-served industrial area is very, very limited, and as we look into at the Growth Management Act planning opportunities into the future, you know, my question is, where is there an opportunity to aggregate some of the overall vacant buildable acreage into actual industrial sites or industrial park-like modeled sites? And that's what I would strive to draft this application around. So EDA is taking applications on a rolling basis. They will be reviewing them at some point in September, so our application would go through the federal portal, but in coordination with the Seattle District Office, and I've been in contact with our county regional liaison there, Laura Ives. And I think the sooner we could get an application out, the better. And so what I'm seeking to identify is, you know, is this something that county council is interested in, one? Is there an opportunity to gain match from the county in the amount of $50,000? And then I think, once the grant for feasibility is awarded, you know, there's an opportunity to negotiate the terms of the consulting contract that we let and help shape what that exploration by consultants looks like. So that's the high-level summary, but I'll pause and stop for any questions.
Quick question, Jen, and thank you very much for bringing this program forward. I was not aware of it, maybe others were not either, and even though the dollar amount is not high, it elevates the topic to one of importance that goodness knows we need to be attending to. So question, on your end, is this a Land for Jobs Committee activity, or how are you structured to approach it?
We have not, or I have not taken this package to Land for Jobs Committee. We're due to meet also in September, but I have discussed it with our board officers and at different executive committee level meetings as a proposal. And so we would house it as CRDC at large, as the applicant, but would invite the advisory capacity of Land for Jobs Committee members.
And given that, what would you see as your partner at the county as far as our structure in responding with you?
Well, certainly collaboration with county staff on, I guess, the areas of exploration that the county would like to pursue also. So I think there's going to take some creativity in this type of feasibility study that would find, maybe not necessarily just identifying a piece of land, but potentially moving assets or, you know, being creative with how an aggregate site could evolve. And the county staff would be pretty instrumental in being able to help share thoughts on GIS mapping and/or vision-making from the county on where there's community momentum and where there is inertia for these employment sites potentially to come to bear.
Thank you. Chair. Kathleen, do you have comments, or how about other counselors?
Chair, real quickly, I think you probably said this, Jen, but you may have used other words, but I wanted to make sure and see if there's an opportunity to really evaluate all of our current jobs land and see whether or not it's even feasible as such, and whether it should be changed to a different use. You know, if it, it probably will never ever develop because of the conditions of the particular site. I don't know if that is some, is part of this, or please comment on that.
Well, that would be an area where county staff could weigh in also. I think it would be possible through some of the GIS mapping tools to identify industrial land that has been vacant for 50 years or 30 years, or you could pick the right threshold, and suggest that the reasons for that land being undevelopable are insurmountable into the future. And then that acreage could inform one of two things, other acreage to be accommodated in the Growth Planning, Growth Management Act planning activity currently, and/or is there an opportunity, when we look at the overall acreage totals, you know, where those breadcrumbs of undevelopable land could feed into recapturing acreage that is maybe in urban reserve or in the boundary reserve currently? So a couple of different angles that could be approached.
Right. I think it's critical for us to really have a broad understanding of what the capacity is out there, and yes, let's fine-tune it wherever we can. You know, let's use land. If we have a shortage of it, it's finite, let's use it as constructively and efficiently as possible. So thank you.
Chair.
Oh, excuse me, counselor.
Jen, would you go ahead first, and then I believe that, was that you, Counselor Marshall?
Yes. But please go ahead and finish, Jen.
From the administrative level, the more co-applicants there are to a grant, sort of the more federal forms and paperwork are included in tiering and compliance. And so from that angle, there are a couple of different ways that the partnership could work also, and I'd be happy to think about that, both with our CRDC executive team and also county council. But there would be the opportunity for CRDC to be the exclusive applicant, but in receipt of funding from a matching partner, potentially the county. Or CRDC and the county, I believe, can be co-applicants, but that would invite sort of a divided compliance stream and double the paperwork capacity for just administering the federal money, even though it's just a little bit of federal money.
Madam Chair. Presser Marshall.
Thank you. I have a few cautionary comments when I hear this, because I wonder how this will be, how this coordinates with the comp plan update and really looking at all land uses. And for example, I think, you know, frankly, the conflicts that we've seen in the past and will see in the future all relate to agricultural land, and I would want to see agriculture represented in this, because as much as there is a need, for sure, for industrial land and to aggregate into larger parcels, the same can be said for agricultural land, which, when you look across the landscape, it's not really readily apparent how much parcelization has already occurred. There's a wonderful 50-acre parcel, but when you look at the assessor's maps, it's actually five-acre parcels already divided. So I think I would not want this to undermine or weight in any particular way one sector when we're looking across the board at the entire landscape. And there's a limited supply of land, and the agricultural land, that is the high-value agricultural land that's been designated and zoned, is, you can't just replace that with some other kind of land. So I think ag, to balance this, if this is a resource that can be helpful, I would want it to be coordinated with the comp plan update and include agriculture and maybe other land use sectors as well at some point in the process, to make sure we're not just running into a collision course at the end. Thank you.
I wanted to ask Kathleen and other staff if you had reaction, since Jen has pointed to the notion that staff would be involved directly with her organization in doing some of the planning and execution of the grant for that matter.
It sounded like, and Jennifer, please correct me if I heard incorrectly, that the funding would actually help a consultant, it would pay for a consultant to come in and do an analysis of the land, and of course, they would need access to our GIS staff. And to Counselor Marshall's point, we can include all of our staff as well as stakeholders in that process, but it sounds like the more heavy lifting would be an outside consultant that would be driving the review.
That would be how I would envision it. You know, CRDC does not have on staff a, an engineering team or a land use planning team. So we would seek to contract out a third-party evaluator who could look at the, the broader geography at large. But this would, in CRDC's view, this would not be intended to be a replacement to GMA activities, right? With $100,000, you couldn't create an overlay that supplants all of the activity that's been going on since 2020 to help guide and shape the vacant buildable lands model. From our viewpoint, this is really looking at commercial and industrial land in, you know, as defined in the VBLM. And my preference would even be to take it farther into the industrial specific zoning. Because there are no other entities that are representing the interests of companies that are trying to grow, and/or companies who would like to move here and grow. So they don't have necessarily a voice at the table right now. And that's where CRDC comes in as an economic development partner, and where I believe the Economic Development Administration would come in to want to support some planning and feasibility study into, you know, where could employment centers be located into the future.
And Chair Bowerman, Oliver is in the hearing room as well. And if it's okay with you, I'd like to ask him if he has any questions or thoughts based on the information that has been shared this morning.
Excellent. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I also have some comments and questions.
Okay, you will follow Oliver then. Thank you.
Okay, so depending on council's direction today, we'll ensure that Oliver and our policy analysts is included in the discussion. Thanks.
So I think, Oliver, are we ready to move on?
Yes, Oliver is fine. And but I'm not sure if Counselor Mavigi, if you are still wanting to say something, but for staffs, we're good.
He is definitely next, Counselor Mavigi, but I was just wanting to be sure that I didn't cut off Oliver. So Counselor Mavigi, please go ahead.
Thanks for not cutting me off.
Never.
I, I don't understand this at all. But it's not, that doesn't necessarily mean it's not a good thing. As to Sue's comments, I was thinking somewhat of the same thing. You know, how does this interface with our comp plan development, lands for jobs? We have had some controversy in the past over what is development, or will be developed, as Glenn pointed out. I, I am very interested in industrial land along our railroad. I, I'm not clear on what this $100,000 buys. What I first heard was, well, we'll find three sites for industrial. Like, well, are you talking about rezoning inside, outside the urban growth boundary, or related to the rail dependent legislation? I think it would be good to have an outside consultant augment and independently a search for industrial land and where it can be. That part I agree with. It may very well conflict with what Oliver's staff has been coming up with or supporting. And that's where we get some value in hiring a consultant that has a different view or broader perspective that may inform the council. So I, I would support this if we were focused on the rail use, because that's the low hanging fruit for available industrial land that the legislature said we could pursue. I mean, there, this is a complicated subject, and I don't know what $100,000 is going to do for us. But I would like it to be independent and be, you know, another view by someone who's an expert. And I would want it focused on the railroad. So those are my comments.
And Jennifer, just a follow up on that as well, to make sure that we all heard, it's a $100,000 grant, but the county needs to pay $50,000 to receive $100. Correct? So it's really that difference?
It's a one to one match, $50,000 from the county or a matched funding partner and $50,000 from the federal government, for a total of a $100,000 overall program package.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Easily, I think, a feasibility could be conducted on agricultural land only with $100,000. I think another planning study could be conducted only on FRDU, independent use with $100,000. Exclusive of the specific use, the areas where on the ground we see business development most challenged is in identifying aggregate industrial areas that are not flanked by residential, or, or critical area land that would prohibit development in a manufacturing base sense. Could that be inclusive of rail or rail adjacent land? Very potentially. I would not, I would want to invite consultation that would look at the broader county footprint and thinking 20 years into the future, you know, where the, the best opportunities for successfully locating employers and creating production capacity and jobs capacity.
Thank you, Jen. And encapsulating what you just said, I'm interested in knowing whether there are counselors who would support going ahead with that view. I would, because I think it could lead to some very helpful information in that industrial area where we need to have action. Was that you, Counselor Mavigi?
Yeah, it is.
So I was gonna say, I understood the one for one match. I was, my comment was, what's $100,000 going to buy us with that one to one match? Again, I am supportive if it's, and it'll touch on agricultural land. I'm supportive of focusing this on our railroad. If $100,000 will also have a broader countywide view out 20 years? Okay, great. Super. And of course, it's going to touch on agricultural lands by, by nature, because those are the biggest parcels available out there, primarily resource lands, forest land, and other agricultural based lands. So I, I am interested in pursuing it, I think, and I would be interested in having it remain, you know, we're going to have to work with staff, obviously, but if it's an independent consultant, I would see this as being within the fold of CREGC for, on behalf of advising the council, in addition to what our county staff, you know, Oliver's staff may be looking at already.
Counselor Young, I believe I heard you speak.
Yes, thank you. I was just gonna say, I'm supportive of this. I, I wouldn't want it to be focused specifically on the FRDU. I would, what I would like is somebody to come in and look at what we've got and come and say, this is what you've got, this is what we suggest you doing with it all. And the FRDU certainly would be an aspect of that. Maybe that's where they end up focusing, because they think that is the area that is more prime or the best, you know, possibility that we have. I don't know, but I wouldn't want them to stick to one specific area or anything like that. I would like them to look broadly. And, and part of my support behind this also is that if we can identify land that is not designated appropriately, we can get it out of that inventory and it creates, you know, less, less, anytime we have land that's misclassified, it's creating an imbalance and it's creating pressures and shortages. And I think if we have our inventory straight, it will put less pressure on having to expand the urban growth area. So that is kind of where my focus lies, is to try to be as efficient as possible with the land that we have.
Counselor Young, thank you. And I believe, if I heard you correctly, that that is consistent with what Jen Baker had said earlier. And do you see it that way, Jen? And if so, would that be a blueprint for going forward?
In short, yes. I think, you know, the county is already doing some significant analysis on, you know, convert, critical areas conversion ratio. So this would not intend to be a disruptor to that analysis that's already taking place by county staff. But there would likely be an opportunity to identify, you know, if there is a certain amount of acreage that could go back into actual feasibly buildable inventory, that that could be tucked into the exploration of some aggregate sites, aggregated sites, not aggregate as a commodity.
Let's see if we have three counselors, just to be sure. I'm supportive of the approach that you have mentioned. Counselor Young, are you?
I, I am at this point, but I still, after the last few little bits of conversation, I would like to hear what the other counselors have to say.
Well, and that's, that's good. I, I, I'm going to count you now as a yes. And are there other yeses or nos? And then let's continue the discussion a bit.
Yeah, so I want to add to this ongoing conversation, because I'm not sure Glenn is different, saying something different from what I'm saying. We're just coming from a different starting point. My, and I just want to reiterate, my concern is $100,000 for a consultant. If it's such a diffuse area, we're not going to get other than generalities. We won't get anything but a boilerplate response. If, if we start with our industrial land being identified or potentially identified by staff along the railroad, but inclusive of all else, just depending on how far $100,000 would go, I, I'm in favor of it. But I want this, the railroad dependent use, because it's for industrial railroad. I mean, it's a good starting point. That's, that's my only point. So you can count me as a positive. I just want to make sure we don't get such a generalized diffuse response from this consultant if we win the grant.
And Jen, you are hearing that loud and clearly, right?
Chair?
Yes, Counselor Marshall?
Yes, just a couple comments. I'll probably be in no on this, not that we're voting, but just moving forward with this or not. I think just the more we talk about it, the more confused I get about what this actually would do. And I'd really prefer to see at least a draft of the grant before I could be a yes on this. And, you know, if we're looking for specific areas to identify industrial land, the discovery corridor, remember the discovery corridor, might be a place to look at, because there's a lot of infrastructure already there. And just another note of caution, I think, with this is if we're looking at changing the designation of like resource lands or other lands, it can't really be done, as I understand, on a piece by piece basis. You really have to look countywide. And that is a huge scope of work that I don't know that Oliver was planning to take on. So just some cautionary notes, but I can't support it at this time.
Michelle, we haven't heard from you yet.
Yes, I was letting Counselor Marshall speak. But I, I do support this. I think it's a great idea. And I think looking at the industrial property is a great idea with an independent lens. So I support this as well.
So Kathleen, does that give sufficient direction at this time for staff working with CRDC?
I think one clarification with Counselor Mavigi's comments is, is the majority of the council supportive of starting the review specific to the properties along the rail line?
Well, personally, my suggestion would be that those rail properties be included, but that the study not be limited to those properties.
Depending on how far the, the money goes. Okay. So I think I understand, the other, the other piece is I'll, we'll be bringing forward a stock report to get funding for the $50,000, because obviously, I don't think we have that in our budget in the council office, nor in Oliver's group. So we'll work with, I'll work with Jordan today and see if we can get this on for next week for your consideration for the funding.
Very good. Anything else from council? Okay, are there other policy issues?
So before we get into the other ones, I just wanted to talk quickly about the process with, now that Jordan has joined our team. Historically, the intention with the policy analyst was that they were to bring up items that they're working on behalf of council, and also provide updates on other policy items that are ongoing during this agenda item. I also appreciate and understand that sometimes counselors need to get a little information before becoming public, because it may, you may find out something that you may not support. And I know that there's a balance. So I just wanted to be transparent with the council and make sure that we're serving your needs and also for the transparency and also for managing Jordan's time and making sure that, you know, one counselor isn't taking all of his time and that he is providing the adequate support to council. So one option, and I'm open to your guys' feedback, is that, you know, maybe with initial discussions with Jordan, if it's going to take him longer than two to four hours to research, then it would come to council for the support of the majority and keep it, you know, confidential discussions between him and the counselor until we get that information. If it's going to take longer than that to do the initial research, and then bring that back to council for direction. So I just wanted to get your guys' feedback on this and what's going to help assist you the best, and also setting Jordan up for success as well.
I'm not sure what we mean by the two to four hours. Is that, let's say, for example, that I have a policy idea that I'd like for Jordan to investigate. Are you saying that if it takes him more than two to four hours to research my idea, that then it would go to council? Is that the point?
Yes, just for context for today's discussion, yes, versus him coming and sharing, I'm doing this research for Chair Bowerman, and then finding out, and it only takes a half a day, and then finding out that you may not like the outcome and don't want to support that moving forward. You know, versus having him doing research that takes a week or multiple days on a topic, maybe at that point, we need to make sure his time is being allocated and supporting the majority of the council.
Thank you for that clarification. Just wanted to be sure that we all understood it the same way. Is Jordan here today?
Yes, he is. He's the one that presented the proclamations this morning, that he is with us.
Very good. And I guess it's a little bit early to ask him if he has anything to add to that. But if he does, I'd still like to hear it. Are there other thoughts from counselors on that policy issue for his time?
So, Madam Chair, I, I agree with the concept. I don't, you know, picking two to four hours, I think that's, you know, if there's five counselors doing a four hour cursory view, that, that tends to suck up a lot of time. You know, I'm thinking in terms of, hey, would you look into this? Okay, I'll research it and take 10 minutes, half an hour, maybe an hour, and then come back and say, well, here's, here's the lay of the land, here's what it would take. So I'm, I agree with the concept. But, you know, two to four hours may be, you know, too much time to invest on behalf of one counselor's initial inquiry that isn't made publicly. So that, that's my only comment. I would just maybe make it a little bit more de minimis, more of a cursory search before it would take three votes to invest more substantial time.
Other comments?
Chair?
Yes, go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
Um, I appreciate what's been suggested. I think it is a good balance. And I think that, you know, to Gary's point, I think that the vast majority of things that we bring to Jordan are going to be 15-minute research deals. But I think there are certain subjects that are just a little bit deeper, that take a little bit more digging, and I would like to be open to that. And maybe we can take a look at this in a month or two and see how his time is being used and how many subjects are taking that much time, and we could reevaluate at that time how things are going.
I really appreciate what all of you are saying. I frankly can't see his work taking 15 minutes to research a particular topic. That's not much time. If the topic has merit and depth to it at all, I suspect it will take a little bit long, quite a little bit longer. But the point remains the same, that there is a definitive amount of time that he would invest per topic or per counselor. And that point remains the same whether it's an hour or two hours.
And Chair, if I can just add, if I, Mrs. Kathleen, if I could just add to, you know, part, it, I know there's a balance here of being transparent and being respectful of the process and the initial stages because I, I'm hoping that, you know, as Jordan continues to support the council, that he's going to be sharing what he's doing with each counselor during our meeting so that you all know what he's working on and stuff. But that's, so that's the end goal, is to have that dialogue so that all counselors know what's working and, and time allocation and support. So, you know, even if something took a little bit longer, that, and what made me think of this more too is, you know, Counselor Young saying, let's wait a month to see how it goes. Is council supportive without having any parameters with Jordan just sharing everything that he's working on for the next month publicly with no pause? Because that, that would create the, the address. And it certainly has to council and how you would like to do that. Do you want to, Jordan's at the mic if he can, if he has anything to ask or add.
Am I on now? Okay, there we go. Sorry about that. Yeah, no, I'm, I'm very supportive of that. I think, you know, how council wants to best utilize my time is a little bit up in the air. I agree with the chair. I think most things are not going to take 15 minutes, especially if I need to, you know, go back to the RCWs or sort of look at county statute and things like that, just to get a baseline to, to understand. Or if I need to reach out to staff and have a quick meeting to understand sort of the historical context of what's been done in the county before. So just to say, I'm supportive of, of that. I think there's also, in my mind, prioritizing what has been given to me by full council first, you know, doing that work, and then going to each of the individual counselors and their individual interests and projects and sort of using that as a, as a framework to guide where I, where I spend my time if there are, you know, challenges with just how many things I need to be working on. So that's also kind of the framework that I have in mind. But, but very open to being flexible and working with council to make sure that I'm supporting you in a way that makes the most sense for all of you.
Chair? I appreciate the frameworks that you're suggesting. Are there other comments from council?
Yes, Chair, I just would support the two to four hour as kind of a guide for us now and then come back and evaluate in a few months and see if that's working for the counselors and for Jordan. So, sounds good.
Very good. And, and thank you, Kathleen and Jordan, for bringing this up today as a policy issue. It, it probably couldn't be much more important in helping the, the council to really move forward with the vision that we have had in mind for having someone in this position for policy.
So, am I hearing, yeah, I was going to say, am I hearing that the council's supportive of a timeframe of two to four hours or does something less than an hour? I mean, what, what makes sense? I want to make sure. Okay, so I see two for the two to four hours.
I'm supporting. I'm recommending coming back and seeing how it's working out. Obviously, what it devolved with the last policy advisors, I seem to have been dominating almost 100% of the person's time. So we don't want to repeat that. I, I'm looking at zero to two hours. Again, when, when I mentioned 15 minutes, it's just with someone who's experienced that knows the issues, that's been tracking policy issues for the state and county, they may have something right off the top of the head and say, hey, here's what it is. That's what I meant by 15 minutes. But as far as having to research, I think a two-hour target. I mean, we need to be flexible here and then come back and revisit it, as Glenn said. But I think four hours, especially if, I mean, I just spent an hour going through some topics of, an hour of me talking with Jordan on policy issues. You know, if, you know, if I, if I got four hours of time on each of those topics, I'd be once again dominating all of his time. So I'm recommending zero to two hours, revisit it after a month or two. So once he gets his feet on the ground and everyone kind of hits their pace.
You know, I think we had three thumbs up for the two to four. How about if we say up to four hours? And that includes what you're saying, Counselor Medvedje, which is an excellent point. And I think an hour per counselor per topic is a bit much because that does add up to be too much. But that's where judgment comes in, and that's where the transparency takes over and we'll just not do that. An hour per counselor is good, right?
Yeah, and just to be clear, Chair, I, I spent an hour talking over a lot of topics. Basically, it was an hour of, here are all the policy topics I'm interested in pursuing. So I, just to let you know.
Yeah, I hear you. There are many. And some that have been dropped, which drives me crazy. So, anything else?
Okay, thank you. We'll, we'll, yeah, we'll move forward with this and bring back some information in another month, month and a half. And with that said, we do actually have a couple policy updates. Amber will start and then I'll sort if he has anything for today, but at least a couple from Amber.
Okay, I have two updates that I wanted to bring to council. One was our Camp Bonneville Advisory Group met on August 30th, so it was our first meeting. It was well-attended. We had some folks from the community as well that attended the conversation. We had robust and great feedback. We are going to fine tune a couple things, and so we'll be bringing that back in front of council for possibly some clarification and direction on what council would like to see from that group. There's some, definitely some fine tuning we've, we're going to need to do with that group. So that's my update on the Camp Bonneville Advisory Group. The second update I have is the fencing and the ordinance. So council direction was to take the fencing through the finance team for review. We have completed that with the very limited facilities and also the timing of the year. The finance team has recommended that we go through the normal budget process for approval. So we have submitted a package and you'll see that for council approval within the next, within our normal budget process. So that's the physical component we have with the fencing. The ordinance we received back from legal this week, and I'm finishing a review today with our partners, which is in community services and district court to make sure we have the operational impacts in the ordinance. And then that will be coming back in front of council for a normal process with public hearings. So that will be coming soon. And that's my two updates.
Quick question, Amber, if I may, on fencing. Is there a recommendation that is going to be coming with the financial request?
Yes, Chair. So that is part of the process that we reviewed with the finance team. So that was the cameras, the fencing, the security, so all the things that we discussed when we had our fencing and security conversations. So Michelle has worked with Emily's group. We've submitted the packages through the normal budget processes, as the finance team has recommended. And so that will, information will be in the budget request that's coming forward to council in normal process.
Good. And then on the North Bonneville, you mentioned the follow-up. I did miss how that follow-up is going to take place.
With the advisory group?
Yes.
Chair, so when we met, there's been, of course, a long time distance between when council gave their last direction. That's been a couple years since council's given direction on what the advisory group should be looking at. We combined two groups at that time. The council combined two groups for the, down to the advisory group. So after the discussion with the advisory group in the community, we are going to be needing to fine tune and making sure that we have clarity with council's direction of what that advisory group needs to be looking at for the cleanup, what we've done with the process, and just make sure we have a clear direction forward so it's meaningful and that the community can give feedback.
So it's coming to council in some form soon?
Yes. So we had, like I said, the 30th was our review. I've, the new deputy director, Priya, for Public Works attended as well, and her and I are working through that in the next couple weeks of what that would look like, and we'll get it in front of council for discussion.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Are there other counselor questions, comments?
And I, I would ask, just really quick to, to see if Jordan had any updates for today for policy updates.
Hey, counsel, not too many updates. Just wanted to kind of let you know what I've started working on. I've been meeting with, you know, folks all around the county, department heads, folks in each of the various departments to get my head around what, you know, the key issues and activities that are happening right now are. I've also had the opportunity to meet with most of you individually to get a sense of some of your policy priorities and some of the directions that you'd like me to start heading. I have also been in contact with our state lobbyists, and I know the legislative session is coming up, and so I'm going to be meeting with them to get a sense of what they see coming down the pipe from Olympia. And then also, they have expressed interest, and I've heard from a, a couple of counselors as well, interest in a meeting between the council and our state delegation. And so I'm going to be working on understanding what's coming down the pipe, and then I will also be coming back to you with some information about potential options if you'd like to meet between the council and our state delegation as well.
Counselor Young, did you have something?
Yeah, just really quickly, I know that coming up soon, I don't know when, we're going to be having a discussion, a workshop, work session, I believe, on, you know, the potential for the county to look at a safe stay or safe park or both in the county. And, you know, we've, we've struggled at times with communication between the two jurisdictions, between the city and the county. And I would like to see if, if the council felt that it would be a good thing to have staff available from the city of Vancouver, because we'll be reviewing a lot of the things that they are going and looking at how we can tweak it to make it our own here in Clark County. But I think it would be helpful for me at least to have somebody from the city of Vancouver there in case we have questions.
As, speaking for myself, I would view that as something that would come considerably later in the process, after the county council per se has had a chance to weigh in on its perceptions about even having a safe park, let alone the amount of funds that would be expended for it, what it would look like, where it would be, and all the many questions associated with it. And, and then if it so demanded down the road that a city questions could be framed for them to, to share with us, but that's, that's my perspective, not now.
I, I have a comment, Chair. Counselor Young, have you watched May 2022 ECHO meeting because the potential locations were discussed and also the financial impact and budget for that, that they, that the county didn't have then? Did you ever go back and look at that information?
I've, I've watched it.
Okay, just, just was wondering.
So I agree with the chair, and, and I know Glenn, that you personally know Jamie Spinelli, and certainly you could alert her to the meeting and have her lurk and watch it. It'll be a public meeting. And then if there are some follow-on questions, we could address it later. And then, Michelle, is, basically, we were looking, you know, those first three or four properties. In fact, the fourth property didn't even belong to the county. It's gone beyond that, and the manager had basically a GIS search for all county properties. And that's, so there, the search was broadened beyond what we had addressed at that one ECHO meeting. And so that's what I'm hoping, the, the work session, perhaps there are some additional properties that could be usable or feasible. And, but I agree with the chair. I, I don't really want to get Vancouver as a auxiliary staff input at this point. We, we need to make our own decisions at this point.
I will share right now. Right, right now, tentatively, we're scheduled for the 27th on council time to have this discussion. I will send out the email again that has the maps or the properties, Clark County properties on there, the pros and cons, work that Michael and Vanessa did per council's request, and then I'll find the financials as well that we received from the city. And I know Counselor Medvedje and I were involved with a discussion with them to get some clarity on that. So those are the takeaways from staff, from council, was to get those three items. So I will resend that to all of you, and because Vanessa's on vacation next week is the reason why we're, I'm going to push out to the 27th so she can attend as well.
Chair?
Yes, Counselor?
Thank you, just a couple of comments. Counselor Young, I appreciate you bringing this up because I think there are things we can learn from the city of Vancouver's experience. And I don't know what the appropriate timing is for all of that, but I would want us to be open to get, get whatever questions we have answered by their experience. And just related to properties that may be available for the Safe Stay Safe Park program, I've been approached by a community roots who provides affordable housing, tiny homes, and they've been able to build on irregular parcels. And so I would like us to stay open to the opportunity that some of these properties might be available for, just like the next step up as far as affordable housing and getting people into more stable situations.
You're on mute, I believe, Counselor?
Oh, I'm sorry. I, just to point out, Sue may be not aware of this, but we have been working for literally a couple of years with staff from the city of Vancouver. Kathleen just kind of mentioned meetings that we had had with, with the city to clarify costs and operations. ECHO has addressed this and had presentations by the city of Vancouver. So we are not operating in a vacuum. You know, Vanessa and Michael Torres particularly are well advised and know how this is operating, and, and now we are all, should be well aware of how much it costs. So, yeah, we have an open mind to all of this. A lot of work has already happened, and I think if the county does decide, hey, this is a good thing, we have some properties, then I, you know, then I think we, it would be a good idea to, once we've made that decision, to reengage with Vancouver on some of the the nuts and bolts. And, and just to let you know, they have offered to basically be our consultant. Originally, they had offered to be our partner. If we provided the land, they would run the operation. And then they pulled away from that because of budgeting and capacity issues as they're about to open two additional camps. So it's been an ongoing process. We, we do have an open mind, but I agree with the chair that right now is not the, the right moment.
Thank you for that further information.
Kathleen, do you and Jordan have in what you need to proceed with this?
Yes, like I said, I'll resend the information to council. Yes. Like I said, I'll resend the information to council. We'll put it on the 27th council time agenda. And I did not hear a majority to support bringing the city at this time, but we'll be open to that further down.
Correct. Anything else on policy? Okay, we move to executive sessions. Leslie Lopez, I presume that you are present today. And I wanted to ask, is the 7.1 RCW 42.30.110 still to be on our agenda?
Good morning, Chair. Yes, I am on. And it's my understanding that this is, is on still. And I'll go ahead and state for the county manager, it's my understanding that we wanted to amend the agenda to indicate the amount of time needed, as, which would be 10 minutes, as well as possible after action.
Okay, so thank you. It is 10:52. At 11:05, we will re-adjourn after having been in executive session. And thank you very much, and see you then.
Chair Bowerman, if I may, if we could set a specific time, it's perhaps 12:05?
11:05 would be...
11:05.
11:05 would be fine instead. Yes, it would.
Okay.
I, I think that 11:10 would give us time to get in and out. But what do you think? Are we that fast?
That's up to you, Chair.
10 minutes? Okay, so 11:05. See you back here at that time. Bye-bye. Thank you. This is Wednesday, September 13, 2023. We are back in the meeting of council time, following an executive session on RCW 42.30.110, PRN1, PRNH. The subject matter has been considered, and we do have after action to suggest. I'll call on Councillor Medviji.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I do recommend, after looking at all the resumes and our discussions, to fill the vacancy with a longstanding experienced person, John Marks, and applaud the, the backgrounds and desire to serve. And I, and believe that we should have at least three alternates to flesh out the Board of Equalization. So in that regard, I would also move that Terry Hagberg, Gloria Gomez Matthews, and Joe Klein be named as the alternates.
I will second that motion. Is there discussion? And you did mention Board of Equalization. Thank you for doing that. That is the subject matter for the discussion.
Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Just, I just wanted to piggyback on Councillor Medviji's comments. I appreciate the background and the, the time and the interest to serve of all the people, and encourage the individuals that didn't get appointed at this time to try again in the future and look at other boards as well. If we have openings, we're always looking for good people to fill those positions.
So true. Are you ready to vote? It's been moved and seconded in accordance with Councillor Medviji's motion. Are those in favor, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it unanimously. Congratulations to John Marks and the alternates. We wish you well in your service. The Board of Equalization does a fine job, and we receive compliments on the work of that group. So keep it up. We're sure that you will. If there is anything else for the good of the order, this is the moment. And hearing nothing, this meeting is adjourned.